Serve our community the best we possible. In the whole name, in the name of your father and son.
I plead with you, as a citizen of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the difficult, horrific, and necessary all.
Are there any additions or additions to that agenda?
I would like to add, uh, the driveway at St. Martinville Senior High. Uh, we have a budget of, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand, and the biz came in at three hundred and ten. But, uh, we can also cut some of it out to try and drop the price down, you know, so we don't get over budget as much. But I think we need to keep it at three ten, because we know that's what they're gonna go with. Want to just add it to the agenda?
Yeah, uh, have a motion. You have a motion?
Motion.
Or you want to come up with a few bits? Send your money to the guy. All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna remove, uh, I'd like to remove item two.
Okay. Anything else? Well, I have a two A approval, approval of Head Start Pharmacy Council meeting agenda items, financial risks, missing on that.
These are basic, uh, reviews that we do each month. The part that we review was our baseline budget as well as the child, uh, and adult food programs. So every month we report on our expenditures. That's coming with the findings again.
Okay. I'll move. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Pooch, and a second by Mr. Pooty. All in, uh, this vote? Motion passed. Item two C, consider and or recommend action with regard to insurance proposal submitted by Ronald Brown Louisiana LLC, including general liability, competence, and for, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna turn that over to John Carroll, Ronald Brown. He's been off the market and has gone back to do some, uh, numbers. What else to consider?
Thank you. It's Leonard.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Um, so we got some pretty decent news. Um, this year, uh, the property market, as some of you may have heard, the property insurance market has been a little bit terrible. Um, based on all the storms that we had, uh, you know, throughout the last several years going back to Hurricane Laura, Delta Zeta. I think there was a couple of freezes thrown in there in Idaho last year. Um, the insurance industry has taken a pretty bad hit. And we're seeing a trend in the marketplace of a minimum rate increase, uh, up in a twenty percent range. And we've actually been delivering some rate increases that have been well accessed at three hundred percent. Um, and that includes other school boards at the state. Um, what, what we were able to put together for St. Martin High School Board this year, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna apologize to y'all, you know, at first, because I'm actually getting great changes, you know, in my email as, uh, as we're having this conversation. Um, and that's how, that's how fluid the market has been. Um, we're gonna start off with the property. Um, last year, we had four property markets. Um, this year, because of the challenges in the property market, we had to expand that from four insurance companies to five insurance companies covering the property. Um, the carriers are less willing to take more of the upfront risk. So we're having to split, um, that first ten million dollars. Whereas we had one company last year take that first ten million of ours. We've actually had to split that first ten million into two five million dollar options this year. Um, so the carriers are doing that to mitigate their overall exposure. So that actually generated a little bit of a rate increase whenever you have to bring another carrier into the market. Um, overall, your property premium last year was seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand and, and almost seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. This year's property premium, um, as of right now, I just got a decrease on one of the lines. We're at eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, um, which is about a twelve percent increase in, in the world of twenty percent that was seen. And, um, that is a, uh, five hundred and four thousand dollar increase overall. Um, on the equipment, on the equipment breakdown, we actually moved carriers this year. Uh, equipment breakdown premiums, we had some claims on equipment breakdown. So our previous carrier, um, was looking to significantly increase rates, but we moved back to Liberty Mutual where they're actually giving us a little bit more coverage. Um, and that premium went up about five hundred dollars. Um, our crime went down about five hundred dollars, our crime insurance coverage. Um, our general liability and auto liability, uh, we actually had that, um, a few days ago at around a flat renewal, but we recently added a few buses. So that actually brought the premium, um, up about four thousand dollars for the, for the buses that we added. And then the medical professional liability for the health units, that actually had a little bit of an increase, but it, it wasn't really due to any claims or anything of that. We went from having, um, fourteen, um, fourteen, um, practitioners to thirty-four practitioners as a result of the COVID testing that we're doing in schools. Um, so that fourteen to thirty-four jump, um, brought the premium on the medical professional from fifty-seven hundred to eighty-three hundred. Uh, the patient compensation fund, if that you pay on top of that, actually stayed flat because the, the additional, the addition of the twenty LPNs, the LPNs don't participate in the patient compensation fund, so that premium needed to change. Um, and then what I don't have on here, um, is the cyber liability. And the cyber liability, uh, actually just came in while I was sitting down. Um, last year, we paid sixty-seven hundred for that premium, and we're at seven nine hundred thirteen dollars and four cents. Um, so there is a few changes to the schedule that I had in front of me, but all in all, the changes to the schedule are a decrease from these numbers that I had here. Um, we're, as of right now, we're down to, um, one million, one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars from eleven hundred and two. Any questions? That's a lot of information.
We still have, the might of the not only.
So what we do not have on here is the flood insurance. Flood insurance reduces in May, and as a result of FEMA's, um, risk rating two point oh, um, um, premium changes that are going to affect effective April first, they're actually having to rewrite in their request an additional information on a lot of our exposures and road bridges to Sealyville where we have the two, um, where we have all the policies in place. Um, the questions that they used to ask in the old rating scheme, um, are a little bit different than the new questions that they're asking. So we're having to update that, and they're not giving those quotes out to us for about, until about the fifteenth of this month. Um, they, it has to be thirty days out from the effective date. So that puts us, that puts us out a little bit. So I'll be back in the, in the, after maybe.
In the road bridge area, just road bridge next week?
Road bridge asshole.
And it's a C, C asshole.
Yeah.
That's a lot of big numbers. Now, do you ever consider to bring that self-insured something to the problem?
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's definitely a conversation that we can have. Um, it, it hasn't necessarily come up. We have talked about in the past of maybe increasing deductibles. Uh, that's basically, you know, what, what you do. The, the challenge that you have is when you increase deductibles, where you're at in the deductible plan right now, you would have to increase your deductible tenfold to actually have any significant change you bring that would be beneficial to you. So you basically move on from a hundred thousand dollar deductible to a million dollar deductible. Um, if you bump this to a two fifty or a five hundred, you might have saved ten to fifteen percent of your premium. It's, it's not worth it to do that if you have a major event. But when you get to that million dollar deductible line, you could possibly see a thirty percent drop in premiums.
That's one thing we may want to consider underneath the flood insurance if that's possible because these lawyers has had flood issues with Sealy, Sealyville.
And the maximum deductible that will be on flood is a fifty thousand dollar deductible. So we can actually look at when they issue the quotes, they usually give us different, um, different deductible options. So we can go in and look and see what that fifty thousand dollar deductible option is, and I'll bring that next month.
So this is the final draft, right?
This is the final draft, but any changes that are being made to it, the overall premiums, you know, on that. So this is more of a worst case scenario right now, but I've, I've already, I've already knocked five thousand dollars off of it.
So here's your, now, if you could go over this. Do you have a motion, Mr. Pooty?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pooty, by Mr. Pooch, by Mr. Pooch. Any more discussion? Uh, you can vote. Motion accepted.
I appreciate y'all. Thank you very much.
Okay, item, uh, two D, consider and or recommend action with regard to raising the minimum personal rate from forty-four cents from nine to fifty-eight cents in the mind. Do you have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Natt, thank you, by Mr. Pooch. Any discussion?
Would get.
Let's vote. Motion passed. Item two E, considering and or recommend action with regard to annual smena contribution.
Big motion, that's set.
Second. Motion by Mr. Pooch. That's saying by Mr. Dave there. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Natt?
Yes. Motion has a motion.
Motion passed. Consider and or recommend action with regard to transferring excess workers' comp and group health fund to general fund with injuries and deployment suffering.
No, no.
Have a motion?
Please, no.
Yeah, let's, let's put a, no, I'm not making, I'm not making, I'm here for this. Wait. You have a motion? Accept.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pooch, and a second by Mr. Pooch. Mr. Natt?
No.
Okay.
Problem that I have is medical expenses keep going up, it's pointing to the premiums. So to me, I'm not to stay in the group health. This is not my, my, I have to, that's the first one. I hope, you know, insurance is legal, despite, uh, from group health to grow his salary. And, but I'm sure the, the superannuation may do it in a way legal, but I still think that if they use these premiums for health, for health, especially the three dollars in the top. All right. First one. Secondly, I, I want to add a big, I want you to throw. Secondly, is to transfer it to a supplement. I never thought giving someone to employees, but, you know. Is that one? Is that two? Make sure, all right? So I don't know that those money can be used for suffering. Secondly, if we do that, uh, I would call, kind of, afford, uh, we did this, uh, I wanted the five of the long plaque. These people are not getting a supplement. But I don't know. Kamukale, is vitro, all of those people are children. Most of them don't need the money. They've got thirty years experience. Some of them would probably choose the kids for free, for that dedication. And to not include them when we give our supplement, I think it's wrong. But, and then we changed it, asked it once, with that, uh, bars, and we threw them once. They always assumed they were gonna get, that's how it's done. And they didn't get it, somebody called the office or emailed, where we get it? And they got it installed in email. So before we give them out the supplement, I bring backup, backup. Those people are dedicated. Show up and they help, need kids, the ones we really need. So probably give at least a small token of appreciation. This is why I don't really like, I'm more against.
Okay, um, there, there are two components here in this item that need to be considered. If one of them is workers' comp, the other one is group health. What we're proposing, and this, what we meant that the auditors activated to deliver the audit report to us, yes, told us there's some things that he needed to do to remain in compliance. We have an excess, an excessive amount of money, and what this comp deal would be, to take some of that money out and get it out of the workers' comp one. And so that's, that's the reason for our workers' comp part. I have a follow-up. So that's, you're recommending that we move that to the general fund, and that the workers' comp portion of this, which is one, like roughly one point two million dollars, be given out to the employees as a supplement. That's the part that goes for supplement. Uh, we, we, every time we, uh, like for every grant, when we pay an employee, part of the calculation and the cost of the benefits is workers' comp. So over a period of ten or fifteen years, we've built up this surplus in it. So Ms. Casey and I met, and we've taken some of that money out of the workers' comp, but there's still some of that money left in workers' comp that's considered an excess on, uh, you know, over for whatever you want to call it. So we're not zeroing on the balance. We took out, or the auditors recommended that we take out, and we're recommending giving that back to the employees in the form of a supplement. Again, one inmate, we're recommending this one, that we did last year. The, uh, the group health benefits, they also told us that we had too much money in group health. Uh, um, with group health, we cannot take that money and give it back to the employees or anything like that if they paid into. But several years ago, there was a period of time where group health was starting to get into trouble, so the general fund put some money into group health. So that four hundred, or five hundred?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're recommending to take out is what general fund put in. So it does not come from employee contributions or anything. It's, it was general fund money put in, we're just saying, take it out so we remain in compliance with the audit recommendations. And what I'm recommending to the board is that the workers' comp part, we give it back to the employees. The group health part, we put it back in the general fund surplus and earmark it for group health. Group health is, is a tricky thing right now, and again, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's still a healthy balance in group health after you take that out. But you get one or more, uh, you know, transplants, a liver transplant or a lung transplant or some major cancer treatment, something, you can zero out your group health pretty quickly. That's why I'm recommending that we just take it out of group health to meet the requirements of the auditors. Put it into the budget surplus and earmark it. Next year, the year active, we get a catastrophic year, we can take it and put it back in. So that, that's my recommendation to the board.
Uh, let me just, well, getting back to when we first became board members, about twenty-eight years ago. We came in on this board, it was two point five billion dollars deficit. Mr. Seeda was the superintendent that I seen in the audit. Group health was in trouble. The previous administration did the same thing that you're doing right now. Took the money out, group health went in trouble, general fund went in trouble. I don't want to see that happen again. That group health money should be managed, like you said, in a budget set aside. You take, for instance, if you look at the, uh, workers' comp's money, same thing. You had two big cases that came up, one point some billion dollars. Put group health on the lead. I can remember each and every business for the last five years, two thousand, uh, I mean nineteen ninety-seven, eighty-nine, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in group health each and every year, not seven hundred and fifty thousand. We put two hundred and fifty thousand. And every, every year was a motion made by Ronald Lidded to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars group health to get it up the board. Group health was, you know, deficit, you know, real bad at that time. And to see the, uh, that money go to employee, which they probably deserve. But if you want to give it, I prefer to give it to people. Because it's not just one employee that, uh, it's not, and, and don't say we gotta give it a seventy-five ratio. You know, I'm, if I'm gonna give it, I, I'm not even gonna vote for seventy-five. I'll vote on an equal basis, or, you know, that's, that's my motion.
I got a question here. Can we take that money and reduce the, uh, health insurance? Want to, if, uh, if you can do that? And that would involve all of, unfortunately, right?
Well, you're asking to do a premium reduction?
Yes.
How would it?
That would be a bigger impact to the general, I mean, to the group health fund balance. And then this way, you take this money and earmark it, you have it available in the future. If you reduce premiums and you have some sort of catastrophic event that, you know, a sick employee or several sick employees, and then you have to turn around and raise premiums.
Well, I'm only talking about the workers' comp.
Oh, we are, that is another recommendation, is to reduce the percentage that we're charging. But that doesn't affect employees. That'll, that affects the general fund and all of our grants. Employees don't pay a portion of workers' comp, that's funded by the board only.
No, I think what he's asking is to take the, uh, the workers' comp money, to reduce, to reduce the premiums of the health insurance.
No, that, that we can, because you're, so basically, the money we're taking back from workers' comp is the same situation as group health. General fund gave that money to help support workers' comp when they couldn't, when they were not self-supporting. And so now we're putting it back into general fund.
As, as a supplement, they can use it like they want the healthy, the premiums, or whatever.
Yeah, it's a, yes, it's a, but we can't.
My policy is that it would need to do that, but make sure all employees get.
Oh, yes, it is going to all employees, it's not just.
Including, including the ones who are on the comp?
No, we have never historically, other than the COVID supplement, paid part-time or time sheet employees in supplement.
What was that, about thirty, forty something?
Oh, no, that was. Oh, no, there's like oh for a hundred, yeah, oh, yeah, there's.
The difficult thing about that is somewhere ten hours, somewhere twenty hours, somewhere thirty hours. You give them a flat rate, and you can have somebody who works ten hours, make them say, well, someone at night, thirty hours.
Not fair.
And it, it's complicated. The time sheet. And the board policy up until this point, when we propose a supplement, we're proposing it based on the board policy. If the board chooses to change that policy and come up with some kind of a rulebook which is gonna disperse the supplement to the time sheet employee or the part-time people, that, that's up to the board. But when, right now, that's not the policy. So when we come to you with the recommendation, we're recommending it based on the policy which the board has approved.
If we need to change the policy, we'll adjust it. Thank you. Money for supplement, it says, I'll call the employees to the back. And if we get a check, then we should get something. And the way we did it, Paul, we rolled it down, Paul, whether ESS or whatever it's called, was back. There was, there was.
Adding almost another hundred employees to the pot, so.
They're gonna reduce what you're giving them all time.
I mean, that's, well, you can't, that is a huge issue.
That is some of the feedback that I got, remember we did that last time, is how much do we value? And this comes from the teacher's side. How much do we value their education that they have to spend four years in, in college, or higher than many years they want to, versus somebody that didn't have to spend their own dollars to go to college? So with the split the way it is right there, and what staff is saying, it justifies that side of it. But I mean.
Okay. I'm just, same with the recommendation. We have a couple of motions, and we're gonna disperse it away to boardrooms.
Okay, now, that's going to move.
Move. I, I like to mix up two, that, uh, we give an equal amount to all employees, I mean, that those dollars come from, uh, health, group health. Everybody pays the same for group health. Tell me somebody who's paying differently for group health. Is, is that somebody, is there some paying, uh, uh, employee paying differently for group health? Well, then, then we, then we need to give it equal. If, 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 if the professional is paying more, well, let's give them more. If the professional is paying more, well, let's give them more. If they're both paying the same amount.
Yes, and I had a point while I was.
Give, give the same, if you're talking about group health.
You also have to realize that we have all these retirees on, on the, on the plan.
But we're not talking about.
Yeah, I think someone who can disperse it in the workers' comp or in the group health. Our, our senior point, and.
That's it. Well, that's my vote.
Yeah, whatever you want to say.
You want to make a motion?
Yes.
And that is to what you mean, what I'm, you think.
If you want to add, this is what I'm, I mean.
You said everybody.
Yes.
I'm asking with your motion, you want to add back to.
I'm asking, where is control?
That's why I'm people. Am I allowed to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
We think, you take comments?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm just gonna make a comment. Uh, last night, we had a big baseball game, and the road bridge plays the scene. Road bridge did win, okay? However, the comment that I'm trying to make is this, with the end night. I worked up to nine o'clock last night, okay? And my check, I was, I took my salary away, and that's my salary. That is one of my jobs. But I worked till nine o'clock. Okay? You're talking about giving somebody who works ten hours a week the same amount of money that you're giving me? It's kind of a slap of the face. So I'm asking you to please consider that in regards to your.
That's early night. That's probably early night. I got it. I got it. If that person worked, you, you know, but, uh, the time sheet is going.
Right. No, I'm talking to anybody. You know, whether they've worked on or whatever. I mean, my check, I'm going, if I work more hours, I make the same amount of money I do if I work three hours or ten hours a day, or whatever.
But I just think that for you, definitely, I see equal cost for all employees.
My comment is to everybody. I mean, just, just something to consider.
So what are you talking about?
Everybody gets that much, that's, that's money everybody put in, that's from the general fund. It's not, it's not a stipulation, say, a sales tax one, two, you have to give them seventy-five ratio. You know, it's a stipulation, and, you know, we discriminate right there. I would be honest with you, you got to be accurate, just me.
So I just. By doing seventy-five percent? I'm, I'm saying it's discriminating by doing seventy-five percent?
Seven to five.
Seventy-five?
Yes. If, if, yeah, if you, if you earmark, like I was sales tax already, earmark to what? Seven point, I mean, seven to five ratio. But that money is money coming from the general fund.
I think you keep it simple and fast, staff, if you take measures on that.
I said. Well, you, you have.
You got a motion.
And what, what?
Well, all of my motions. Your motion is to give.
Okay, remember, some two motion, uh, first. You want to motion it? To give people a map. All employees, it's saying by Mr. Natt.
That was their original motion?
No. No, it's our original, we have your original motion.
No, no. If, if it's a sales motion, it's a, with the.
Now, most of all.
No, I, I, it's one of the seven thousand for the.
The, the. Everybody's in the span. How much do you want to give them?
I forget it.
Okay, now, you go to the sales, your motion.
Tell us what we want from, you know, what is the settlement? The settlement motion is equal amount to all employees.
Equal amounts of professionals and paraprofessionals, correct?
Definitely.
No, she's not here. The five to four vote, will you pass? Consider and I recommend acting with the board in Louisiana, Civil, Can, Cooperative, Incorporated, I T E P Notice of Noncompliance.
I'll go with your vote.
I have the motion by Mr. Poche, uh, by Mr. Poche, or Mark, and sent by Mr. Poche. Any discussion? Vote. Motion passed. Item two H, sales tax formally update.
Good afternoon, so before I go over the reporting of this meeting, I want to go ahead and introduce myself as one of the department staff. I'm going to start with the sales tax department staff, we have Ms. Tina Charles and Ms. Dan Lamarr. I'm Jack Chalb, the new sales tax manager. And I wanted to give you a brief history on how I started with St. Martin Parish School Board and how I got to where I am now. For eight years, I worked in transportation and maintenance. In twenty nineteen, I applied to be a business office bookkeeper, I was hired. Uh, when I became the, uh, business office bookkeeper, I was approached by one of the sales tax bookkeepers and asked if I had any objection into being housed in sales tax, in the sales tax department. They had already gotten approval by Ms. Casey and Ms. Blancher, and I had no problem with it. Um, after a week that I would see it in that department, I would hear them answer the phones and handle customers at the window. One day, I was approached by one of the bookkeepers, and I was asked how I was, how I liked sales tax. And I said I was very interested in it. Next thing we know, I had the administrator and both bookkeepers saying that they knew I liked sales tax. They were looking into the future of the sales tax department because they had one bookkeeper that was retiring in August of twenty eighteen, uh, sorry, twenty twenty-one. And another bookkeeper in August of twenty twenty-two. And they knew that sales tax is a special subject that was not taught. You couldn't go to class for it, it was something that you had to learn on your own. Oh. So as time went on, they started giving me more duties. And then we shadowed them when they were given the tax payers. They let me open mail, process it, tally it, scan it. Oh. After a few weeks, COVID nineteen hit, and there was a stay-at-home, stay-at-home order that was implemented. Because my duties were both in sales tax and the business office, we came to the conclusion that I would work every day. Oh, we had Mr., we had the previous administrator in Baton Rouge, one bookkeeper in, uh, Sicily and other Latvia. I was out of here in February, so I was closer. I came to work every day, open mail, process it, got it to where I did to be. Uh, before the pandemic hit, the previous administrator, I had purchased, uh, a new program because the term program we had was outdated and was not sufficient. I was asked to participate in the training, which is a two-day virtual training. So I learned the new system. We also had to run parallel, we were running in two systems to make sure that the new system was capturing everything correctly, which was, uh, very consuming and very strenuous. I started working the same schedule as the bookkeepers and administrators, we worked late, came in early. We worked weekends, we would leave, go home to our families, and we started Zoom conferences to discuss what we could do to enhance. Oh. In November, we were comfortable with not running parallel, and this November twenty twenty-one, we were comfortable not running parallel. Um, in December, the administrator and that, that was resigned. So myself and the two sales tax bookkeepers started training with the administrator on their administrative duty, on his administrative duty, so we could keep the department afloat and running. After that, we had more battle up. The sales tax bookkeeper that was retiring in twenty twenty-one went on medical leave. So that forced me and the one remaining bookkeeper to learn and pick up all the duties of the department, as well as train the new administrator. When the new administrator came in, we trained the administrator. The administrator stayed with us for anonymous, and then. When that happened, I asked the one remaining sales tax bookkeeper, you've been here for twenty years, why don't you apply? She stated that she liked her job and didn't want the added responsibility of being an administrator. She proceeded to ask me the same question, why don't I apply? Because I already know the, the procedure, the duty, the people, and the content. So in January of twenty twenty-two, I applied to be the manager of sales tax. In February, I was interviewed and appointed as sales tax manager. And I'm here today to present a report on the collection for the past five years plus current. And this report is not being presented because of your last board meeting. When I was hired on, I had a meeting with Ms. Casey and Mr. Blancher, and this was something that I actually wanted to do. So if you look at the tactic that I gave you on the first sheet, you can, it's a comparison of where we are with total collections, and this total collection is for the entire parish. And as you can see throughout the years, we have been increasing in the taxes collected. If you go to the next page, it's the same figure, just broken down by quarter. As you can see, each quarter we're increasing, and this, this is the total collection for the parish. So we're going in the right direction with collecting taxes. Uh, some of these numbers are high because we have collected high-dollar audits, and we're going to continue to, to do that. On the next page, I broke it down by month, so you can see for the past five years where we were turning up. On the next sheet, it's our fund seventy balance. So you can see where we are with fund seventy for the past five years and the first quarter this year. And again, I broke it down by quarterly and monthly. And after that, we have fund sixty, and it's the same thing as fund seventy. Uh, you can see where we were for the past five years plus current, and I have it also broken down by quarter and month.
All right. You got that one? I'm going to give you the one, thank you all, thank you. Okay, um, item two I. Uh, it's raised construction, budget is three hundred and ten thousand dollars for St. Martin. Do I have a motion? Motion probably, excuse me, I was about to say there. Let's vote. See, all that is, uh.
That's bond money. Yes, it's for our bond money.
We're going, we're going to try and cut it, cut the project for the short, so we can become under budget.
Mr. Frank, can I make?
Go on, sorry.
So in order, in raising the budget, we also need to approve going out to bid for this project because it's over the threshold for bidding, so we, the board needs to approve to go out for bid in addition to increasing the budget.
Okay. So we're going to raise the budget, but we need to put it out for the year.
Yes.
We need to add that. See, I had to add to your motion.
I have to hear your motion.
All right, we're going to add it, the, uh, increase of the budget. And, uh, to go out on bids.
Also re-adapt.
And, and we're going to re-adapt this project. Try and get it under budget.
Now, the motion probably, excuse me, I was about to say there. Will you pass?
Put it to the jury.
Will you put it to the jury?
Five is, we sit, we close, we begin.